High School.
Thank you, we're proud of it.
I had not seen.
Turned out really nice. I won an award, it's one awards.
Who's the architect?
Architects with.
We'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Last for a motion to approve the agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, so we're gonna start the, the only item for review is interviews of potential hiring firms for superintendent search. And we have, up first will be Northwest Leadership Associates, Bill Jordan and Sergio, and I didn't get your last name, Hernandez, that's right. Hernandez are here to go over their proposal and answer any questions we may have, so.
There is like a little missing photo going on, yeah, there was a amber alert from, I saw earlier, but.
So with that, we'll let you, you guys start and you can kind of walk through your proposal and go from there.
Okay, good, thank you, thanks for having us, appreciate the opportunity to talk with you about Northwestern Leadership Associates and how we may be able to assist you. We sent you a proposal, we, in that proposal outlined the work of the board in relation to the work of the company. So as we move through the process, there's things that you count on us getting done and we count with you getting done. And you also saw a timeline in there that began, actually right away with proposal, the plan of the contract, but also a search plan. And we had a draft and a search plan for you in there that actually began in October. And ended early in the, in the superintendent search cycle, okay, around February. That's a draft and it can be, it needs to be looked at carefully and fit the needs of the district and in relation to how much community involvement you want, how many people you want to see, what kind of interview schedule you want. But as you saw the, the proposal, you saw a proposal that takes us through meeting with you individually to talk about the characteristics and qualifications of superintendent. And also stakeholder groups, administrators, community members, teachers, classified work, students, people that have a stake in and really support the operation of the, the school district. We also, you saw that we do an online survey in Spanish and English and that that gives you as a board, pretty broad access, I mean, there's very few people that can say they were not able to provide input into the process. And depending on what we're finding with most boards is that you want to be transparent as possible, you want to have people be in a position to say, well, the board is considering my opinion. Don't get into consideration what we had to say and didn't really do everything I wanted, but at least they asked me my opinion. So there's many choice chances for that. What? We can walk through that timeline and proposal in relation to the stages of that, you saw four phases and each phase was, the consultants will do this and the board will respond with these responsibilities and actions and we depend on you for making certain decisions. But we want to take a few minutes and have a, a little bit of a different conversation for for this specific time in the Prosser School District decision-making. So Sergio and I have been talking about not just this proposal and the work of finding a superintendent, we're currently working with Grandview. And we worked with multiple districts up and down the valley and around the state. But we, we want to talk with you about and the, what you're gonna do now, okay? Kind of the, okay, this is nice, we talked about search firm, but what are we gonna do next week and how are we gonna get through next year and what's that gonna look like? So we'd like to talk with you about that, okay?
Yeah. Excuse me, my voice is kind of failing me, but we'll be, well, it's the smoke I'm gonna blame it on, Canadian smoke. We have, as you all know, you're very late in the, the search process timeline and windows. Many folks have either made a decision to stay where they are or they've already accepted a position in another district. So our question to you is, when we say interim, what, how do you define that? What does that mean to you as a board? Are you looking for someone to just carry you through next year? Are you willing to consider that individual as a full-time superintendent? If you were to come to a mutual agreement after six, seven, eight months of them serving as your interim next year? The, it, it's very interesting, the word is out in the state. Today, we heard from four, four individuals wanting to know what's Prosser going to do, are they gonna hire an interim and what does that mean? What if I move to the district, serve them well for a year? Would they consider naming me as their superintendent? Or do I have to go through the full process as outlined in the, in the proposal? So that's kind of the conversation would be helpful for us to know what you're thinking. What, what would be the long-term expectation and goals for you as a board?
We have, we have people that have contacted us that are strong, yeah, strong superintendent candidates. That would consider an interim position if it meant they'd get a, a good look during this time for the superintendent position. We also have people that are retired and can come in and do the job for a year and, you know, one and done or those kind of, but they're very different candidates and very different operationally. Both of them will run your district well, both, both models. But one will have a stake in it that, this is my shot to get this job. And the other one is, this is my job to get this in position for the next person and make sure that that's a good transition. So we're asking you to talk about that for a little bit.
What is your experience with an interim that has been hired as a superintendent? Have you had candidates in the past that you've done that with? Is that common?
It's, it isn't necessarily common. It's, yeah, it, it's not necessarily common. What we're, the reason we're bringing this up because it is unusual, because we think we have, there's some candidates that are, they're superintendent material, they're ready to go, they've, they're either applying in other districts or finalists in other districts, so.
And sitting superintendents.
Sitting superintendents, I mean, they're for you, the important thing there obviously is they've had the opportunity to understand the relationship with the board, to understand that in a complex organization, what that, what that person does. Retired superintendents also do that, I mean, they've, they've had that successfully. So it's, it's, it's not usual in that sense. I've served as an interim superintendent and Sergio has as well. And when we walked in, we knew this is about how much time you got and this is what we like done to get ready for the next superintendent. We need this for a good transition and to get us in good shape and the last person didn't do this and if you take this job, we want you to do that.
Can't see for anybody else, but to me, it would depend on experience and qualification. At that time, I would be able to make a decision if that's what I wanted in this person. Part blanche, okay. Automatically, if you're the interim, then, you know, because like you said, somebody would relocate to do this for us. They've got to have a little bit of assurance, but I think we would get a feel for that interviewing and, you know.
Sure.
That's my opinion.
Well, that's good.
I think the most important part of this process for our staff and the community and the board is to have the community, all the stakeholders involved throughout the entire process. This is a great opportunity to build a wonderful relationship between the school district and the community. And we have a community that's very invested in this school and wants to be involved. So I think if we say, okay, we're gonna get an interim and try you out. And then with it, end up saying, they, they're great, we're gonna hire them, we cut out that process. Having the community vet candidates and be involved, that's a missed opportunity for us. Certainly, an interim could apply and go through the process. But I think we have to cast a wide net and get everybody involved in the community and the school that wants to apply. So to me, trying him out for the six months is not, I'm saying, if it works out, we're gonna hire you, is not ideal for our district.
So, you know, I would, I would echo a lot of whatever, what's already been said. I have a little bit of hesitation on interim, especially pulling someone out of retirement. I don't want to just fill a chair just to fill a chair. You know, not to say that a, a retired superintendent couldn't perform the functions, but like I said, I, I don't want to just fill the chair just to make sure we have the title filled. You know, this person needs to be able to come in, you know, and, and, and gain enough knowledge of this district that it can, that they can start taking over and actually do performing the duties of a superintendent that what, for what Prosser needs, you know, to, to take some of the burden off of some of our other staff. I think it's vitally important just to not find somebody. I would probably lean towards a candidate as an interim that is looking for a permanent solution because they have more, they have more skin in the game. They have more skin, they're more likely to perform at a higher level, at least in that interim process, than I think of retired. And that's just my personal opinion, but this is the first time I've ever gone through this. You know, so it's treading slowly and being able to get all the information we can to, to make a good decision for, for Prosser.
Right.
What's the most compressed timeline that you guys have filled the position before?
Over.
Probably Grandview right now is, we had to expedite the search because they made their decision fairly late.
Have you found that the candidate pool is smaller or the?
No, actually, it's a pretty good pool, really stronger than we expected in the sense that we knew we'd get some good strong people in the pool. We didn't know how deep that would go considering how late it is, but yeah, very good.
That's good to hear. Do you mind if I ask a question? Can I ask a question? Is it unusual, is it unusual or should we find it concerning that somebody is willing to leave? Like had they been the bird in the hand for the bird in the bush? Like they, they have a job and they would, and they would leave it not knowing they have a job? Like is there, like what's the guarantee, you know, there's no guarantee?
Right.
So is it less likely that those people would be interested in the interim because of that? Because basically what Elisa said, no, we really need to do the full process, not just go, you did a great job, this job is yours.
I'm, I'm gonna say not necessarily. Not necessarily, there's unusual circumstances that are causing this person to make a decision to come to the valley.
Okay.
So it's, it's no.
Okay, and, and you know the valley much better than, than we do, but there have been folks that as soon as they heard that there was a position in the lower Yakima Valley, were ready to apply both at Grandview and here.
This is, this district has a good reputation, it's a solid district, it's been strong for a long time. Good community support, I mean, it just, this is a good, really good job. So yeah, you're gonna have good people looking at it.
This is a, maybe off topic for timelines, but people that you've found for roles, how long have they stayed in those roles? Are they long-term? Do they, you have an average number of years that they work in their positions?
I think we, in our proposal, we, we maybe that, yeah, it's, it, it, we have people staying in the, in the job. The key, the key thing is the six of you, the board and the superintendent have got to, you've got to start off on the right foot and that's when we talk with candidates, that if it's a split vote on the board to go in, we typically advise against, against them going to that district. So we want a solid core team, everybody's in love with each other at that point and happy with each other and, and understands the work. The board, the boards that are clear about their expectations and the goals and what you really want to have happen. And candidates come in and are candid about what they can do and will do, how they're gonna do it. And those match up, then they, yeah, people stay. And at least as you, as you're saying, having the community understand that they were a part of that or that they understood the process and had a hand in it. Makes it, makes everybody want that person to be successful, that's the most important thing, is everybody wants success, so we do have longevity. We've had some anomalies where a couple where the, a person, a spouse thought that that was gonna be a great move and after a year or so, it, it wasn't a board superintendent situation where they fell into disfavor with each other, just it wasn't gonna work for the family and so we've seen that happen.
I remember when the last search for superintendent, Mr. Ellis was hired, that agency that was in charge, they spoke at Rotary, Rotary meetings, the other meetings around the community and the information, I remember that stuff with me, that they said five years, it's kind of how long.
Five to seven. Five to seven is what we're telling superintendents that they really need to think about, be ready to go that far. And I was, I was part of that search. I'm trying to remember how many organizations I met with in Prosser, but it was a bunch, I mean, we went all over and, and yeah, that was, that was a, a lot of, a lot of community input, just anybody who wanted to talk, Booster Club, I remember, FFA, advisor, all kinds of, all kinds of folks.
And candidates come to you, do they pay you for a placement service or how does that work? How do you find people?
We, we have in our Northwest Leadership, we have consultants all over the state who are in contact with applicants, candidates. We have associates that are on, running the superintendent program at Western Washington University and on faculty at WSU search their preparation programs and we, yeah, we network hard to stay in touch with people. Sergio is the executive director of the Washington Association of Latino Administrators and so he's got a, a connection with sitting superintendents and administrative as well as being able, and you're also mentoring people in the field that are preparing for the job.
And the, the other thing too is that we have an, an email mailing list of about 3,000 plus names that we send out to. And it's not just in the state of Washington, but actually around the world. I mean, last year we did Eastmont search and Becky Berg was in Dubai and she's now their sitting superintendent. So we network, we, like Bill mentioned, all the other, you know, contacts that we have, it, it's a wide, it's a wide net that we cast.
And would we work with you two gentlemen throughout the process or would there be other people that we would work through and with?
Well.
That's a good question.
That's a good question.
You might not like this.
Yeah. That's why we're here. To find out, but typically that's what, that's usually the way it goes. Yeah. We have, we have associates, how many, nine, 10, 10 associates from on both sides of the state that are doing the same thing and we tend to work regionally, actually.
What are you looking for for a fit between a school district and your candidates that you put forward?
Say that again.
What are you looking for, for a fit? You're not gonna bring me the district, the board, your 3,000 candidates.
Correct.
You're gonna give us a longer list or a shorter list, so how are, how do you select the people you're gonna bring forward to the process?
You're gonna, yeah, no, that's the right question, you're gonna, actually, you're gonna tell us. We take all that community support and you agree on the characteristics and qualifications that you want in the next superintendent. What kind of training, experience? Education, whether they've been a teacher, principal, superintendent, whether they are, how involved they are in the community and must be involved. What type of person that you want, I mean, characteristics, of course, this is a, a, a job that takes a lot of energy, leaning into the, you have to have a fire in your belly to do the job. You've got to be honest and have integrity and, and be an excellent communicator. And that's demonstrated in a couple ways. We, we ask that the candidate write to you addressing each of the qualifications and characteristics that you say you want in a candidate. So if you want a person who's well-versed in curriculum and instruction and on strategies for instructional models, they need to write to that and talk to you about how they do that. Or if you want to build trust in the community and build relationships with, with parents and community, they're gonna write to you and tell you how they would do that, how they've done it and been successful in the past. So even before, when we get to the screening process, you're gonna be screening these candidates against what you said you wanted. And so we don't do that, we do background checks, we'll tell you if they, if they are have integrity or what their experiences have been within relations with their previous, in their previous jobs, how they got along with people, what kind of leader they are. But you're gonna measure against what you said was important in relation to these characteristics and qualifications. Has this person demonstrated successful leadership in leading a complex organization? Have they built relationships with city and county governments that benefit the district? So when we bring the candidates to you, the applicants, you're gonna see them all, you're gonna read them all and you're gonna filter them out and you're gonna say, we want to see these people because they most closely match what we said we wanted. So you're gonna tell us, basically.
Yeah, our job is really to facilitate the process and you make the decisions step by step by step.
So Peggy had texted me because she's, she's having a little bit of trouble hearing some of the things. She said it might be her location, so that's our fifth board member who's online. So, I mean, just make, if we can speak loudly clearly, I moved that mic, so I thought that might help. So, yeah.
So I have a couple of questions, you know, if, you know, if you were selected, I'm kind of looking through the timeline a, a little bit, but in reality, we're looking for an intern, interim candidate. What's a realist, what's a probability of getting one, like what's the timeline that? Can you go through the timeline to make that happen? How's the process work?
Sure, sure.
No, I, it's gonna have to be very expedited, it's gonna have to be a very quick turnaround with probably very little community input at this point. If you really want to have them hired by July 1, which is when normally a superintendent's contract begins, as you know, and June 30 will be your current superintendent's last day in the district. If you're looking for community meetings and forums and, and bringing the folks in, it's gonna be very difficult for Bill and I to do that.
On an interim.
Yeah.
Just not gonna, not gonna work.
Yeah.
It's really gonna be getting some names and people in front of you and you having some serious conversations, interviews, we'll call them interviews, but really serious about what, what we're gonna be doing and, and how you work as a board and how they can get through the next year and what are those priorities? So it'd have, that would happen pretty quick, I mean, we, we don't have long before July 1.
You already have a pool of candidates who could fill an interim role if we decided to expedite it with them.
We have, we have people who've, yeah, we have people who've talked to us and are
That you feel are qualified to.
Yes, yeah, we can say, we can say that with confidence.
And these are the candidates you're talking about that would like some assurance that if they came interim, they would have a better shot at the full-time job, at the same candidate.
Some of them.
Some of them.
More expensive, expensive, isn't it, to bring in an interim? Is it more expensive or is it a traditional salary for superintendent?
Oh, well, here's, I've been an interim and my question is always that you want me to be the superintendent, then you better pay me like a superintendent, that's my job and that's what I'll be doing.
A shorter.
No, 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 no. Yeah, typically, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, no, it's it doesn't make any difference, it wouldn't make any difference whether they were retired or not. This, the, the work you want is the work of a superintendent and so that's, that's how you need to treat that person contract-wise. The difference obviously is you're not offering a three-year contract. Your date certain that we're, we're done typically.
Negotiable.
Yeah, sometimes. No, no, I.
No, it's a big question.
That, that it depends on the candidate and depend on how you might do that, so.
Oh, Bill, I don't know if you can hear me. This is Peggy.
Hi Peggy.
Hi, um would that interim position be a one-year position? Or could it be less than a year?
Oh, well. I've seen it. I've seen it less than a year. I've seen it at least a year. At most a year, let me put it that way, at most a year. So that you you give your time, yourself time to um to have transition January, July one. Where I've seen it. Less than a year, i- it's happened to with a non-traditional candidate typically. So someone, I've seen it happen with lieutenant colonels coming out of the military, taking a superintendency. I've also seen it with a CEO of a large. Organization leaving um and being able to transition early.
But better city, excuse me, a city superintendent. Most likely would not leave in the middle of the year or say March or April. To take the job here if that was the direction you wanted to go.
Right.
Okay.
So in the pool, so retired superintendents, um we know there's, you know, retirement issues and all those things. Other retired superintendents, we're talking about people that would come and work full-time, not ask for a reduced. Schedule.
Right, they would have to figure out what they're gonna do with um.
Retirement.
Retirement.
And this is the quickest turnaround you've ever worked with in your experience?
Uh.
To fill the role.
Thank you.
Permanent.
Yeah, yeah, considering it's the seventeenth, eighteenth of May and July one's coming up, uh yes, good answer.
And you only work in education, is that correct? Filling superintendent roles, assistant?
Right.
Any other positions other than superintendent?
Principals, deputy superintendent.
Thank you.
Better education.
But we've had others. Outside the profession applied to the profession. You don't need a superintendent certificate to be a superintendent.
I I suppose I was wondering, do you do like police chief, city administrator, strictly education?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you guys have pause or concern to? Try to do a full search before January first?
July one.
Or July one, yeah.
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 I think you've limited your pool tremendously, especially uh. To leave a current position to come to an interim position would be. Would be pretty tough or a full-time position.
That, that's what I meant with they.
I, I.
Maybe incentivized to leave maybe if they get out of the full time.
What I heard the board say at least is that you would really want community input, you'd want. All this information gathered, we want to interview you as board members, what are you looking for? Put together the recruitment brochure and so on. It would be very, very difficult to do a full-time permanent search at this point.
How extensive would your interim search be? If we went that route to buy us some time? Are you relying on people that have reached out to you or are you actually reaching out to folks and how does that?
You ask us to do that, we're not gonna limit ourselves to the people who've just talked to us.
Okay.
No, we'd broadcast that pretty broad and. I mean. Actually, we'd treat that. With the same three thousand emails to colleges and universities and placement offices and professional organizations and school districts. That's, that's where all those emails go all over the, all over the West Coast, but all around the world when we get to. People that are looking for jobs are looking on WASDA website and the WASSA website. Sometimes AWSB, but WASSA and WASDA typically, if they're looking, that's where they go.
And, you know, I think it's the question that is asked, is it us? It could depend on how quickly you we move and you need to move. To do the interim because we have to wrap up. Grandview and we have already the date set for the preliminary interviews and the final interview, so it kind of. But we do have other folks on the west side, I'm excuse me, on the east side of the state that. Would help support us as well if that's the direction we go.
What does an ideal superintendent search look like? There's no time restraints, what's the ideal?
The timeline that we've outlined here.
Okay.
Where you start with interviewing the board. Members individually, start to create a a uh. A uh, an ideal superintendent for Prosser. Brochure with all the things that you're looking for as a, as a district. And then, of course, to get all the feedback. From the community groups, from students, from staff, from classified, from transportation, so on. Everybody has the input and that's what we've outlined here.
So it takes, yeah, would we start in October?
Finish in February.
Superintendent, first part of February.
And it really does put you at the front end of the window.
Okay. What happens if your board goes rogue after you're hired and they bring in their own candidate?
Now, run that by me.
If we go rogue, okay, this is a great list, but we found, we found this guy under a rock somewhere. Someone's cousin said he was great, so we should interview him.
Yeah.
Does that violate the terms of the agreement with you? Does that happen sometimes?
Never seen it happen.
Okay.
But we'd still take your check.
Of course.
Haven't seen, haven't.
Save the candidates.
Haven't seen it happen.
No, I think I, you know, just, I I haven't met everybody, but. You can tell you're very thoughtful and wanted to get the best candidate for your district because it really is such an important selection.
This is the most important decision you make. I mean, you, you pass the budget and you adopt curriculums and. You approve program materials, but. The run, the person who's the CEO is superintendent and that's, that's the person you hire. Or he recommends everything or she does to you and you approve it. So this is it. This is a big one.
And and some of the folks that have contacted us that we feel are very, very strong candidates. Would like at least an opportunity to interview as a finalist if that's the case next year. But they may still consider it even if it's an interim without any assurance or agreement, so.
You mentioned that you're operating the Grandview search right now. Are the candidates different for the Prosser search if you were to have it? Have you been contacted by different candidates or are they the same candidates that showed interest in Grandview?
Most of them are the same candidates. They want to live in the lower valley.
What's the draw, lower valley versus Western Washington? Is that kind of the dividing line or?
Oh, yeah.
What is it?
It's Eastern Washington. Well, Eastern Washington, number one, the valley, it's, it's um. It's between. Tri-cities and. The west side. I mean, it's not either and yet it's got water, it's got uh. Recreational activities and it's, it's, it's uh. It's just a more family oriented than a lot of places.
And a small community, small community life and working and honestly. A similar sized district on the west side is probably paying forty to sixty thousand dollars more a year. Maybe even higher than that.
I've met people that have moved here, but the number one thing they mentioned to me is the weather. Love the weather.
Quality of life, weather, small town.
Yeah.
And and your size district is very, very appealing to many individuals because you really get to know the community, the families, the students. The football games on Friday night are a big deal. The whole community turns up. If Prosser goes to the football chess championship, it's the last one out of town, turn off the lights.
Yeah, single high school districts are.
Very appealing.
Very appealing. Thirty-six hundred students. Your central office, you have a, you have a staff that is providing enough support. That the superintendent's not overwhelmed with every piece of work. So you've got special ed director, curriculum director, technology. Transportation supervisor, food, so you've got people that do those. But then you're not so big that you've got a layer in between those folks. And if you get too large a district, it's, it's harder to. To build those relationships in the, actually, yeah.
And we used, the district used your firm for the last search, is that correct?
The firm guided the process, the board selected.
Thank you.
Any other question? Comment? Peggy? Do you have anything?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Is there any last sales pitch you you'd like?
No, good luck. I mean, this is a big deal for you guys, so it, you know. You'll, you'll, you'll make the right decision and and it's, it, it's the initial relationship and. It, you know, making, making sure that you get the right person. That you're all, that you're all excited about that. Not just the process, the thing that winds up at the end.
And and if you decide to go just interim for one year. The process is gonna be very scaled back. I mean, you really won't have time to get all the feedback from all the different groups and entities that exist in the community. You're gonna have to make that decision fairly quick as a board.
When would you need to hear from us?
Yeah.
Yesterday.
Um, one quick, I'm looking over the guarantee. Um, it does say that you will. Continue to, if something doesn't work out, whether it's a board decision or a. Uh candidate decision, how long does that guarantee? What is that? Is it a year or is it two years?
I think we put two years.
Two years.
Unless I didn't read it right. Okay.
And and that would, that would be for the full-time superintendent, not your interim superintendent, obviously, because. It's a one-year contract if that's the way you go with an interim.
And then to clarify, you're willing to do the interim and the permanent search for one B.
Because our involvement is probably gonna be very limited in the interim search. I mean, there isn't, there isn't gonna be time for all the meetings and. Us traveling here and spending time in your communities.
Anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Bill, Sergio, I appreciate you taking the time to visit with us today.
Happy to do it.
Very nice.
Yeah. Wish you. The best success.
That's right.
Best thing that's happened for the kids and the community, for sure.
Nice seeing you again, Bill.
Thank you, Peggy.
Yep.
Didn't really see you, but.
Well, I see the.
Yeah, thank you.
See you again, Bill.
Thank you. Same trouble, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. You already shook my hand.
Oh, yeah, I did.
I'll do whatever you want to do.
Thank you, Sergio. I appreciate it.
Always. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Likewise. Thanks. Seeing everybody.
Our next, is our next one virtual? Is that right?
Yes, our next one will be virtual. Uh, there'll be. Two candidate or two, two people. Huh?
Timing for the start of the next one?
One minute.
Perfect.
Trying to streamline this thing. Um, so I I'd probably ask is Steve and Hank, are you online? I see Hank.
Yes, how are you, board?
Very good, thank you. And I think I see Steve up and Steve up there as well.
I'm here. It's good to see you.
Thank you. So um Steve and Hank are with Human Capital Enterprises. Um, and they've submitted a proposal as well. I guess we'll start with, with, with you folks um and present what uh. Yeah. I'll let you guys start. How's that?
That sounds great. Um, thank you for having us. We are, we are really excited about Prosser. We know um leadership transitions are always anxious times. Uh, but we are, we would be absolutely jazzed to serve as your partners. We think we can offer something that. You might very well not find in another search firm. I want to first introduce myself and then my colleague, but even before that, I want to say that we're very sorry we're not there with you in person tonight. Both Steve and I are out of state, otherwise we would be, uh, we'd be sitting there and we would look forward to sitting. There with you and the board uh at a, at an upcoming time if possible. I'm Hank Harris. My firm is Human Capital Enterprises. I spent a better part of my career as a teacher and administrator uh both in Oregon and Washington. I started my career as a teacher. In the Evergreen School District down in Vancouver, finished my K-12 time as executive director of human resources for Bellingham. Uh, and I've, I've uh run this firm, this search firm for about ten years focusing on leadership. Executive leadership searches, such as what we're talking about tonight, primarily in Washington State as well as in Oregon. My colleague and friend Steve Webb is here with us as well. Steve, why don't you introduce yourself?
Thanks, Hank. Uh, as Hank indicated, my name is Steve Webb. I recently retired in twenty twenty-one. As superintendent of Vancouver Public Schools in Southwest Washington. Serving fifteen years uh as superintendent, superintendent successor, thirty-six years in public schools. I'm very familiar with the Prosser Tri-Cities region. I have family in the area. Spent a lot of time at ballparks. My youngest son is on a competitive travel baseball team, so uh. I I spend quite a bit of time with family uh on the road in uh the Tri-Cities region. And look forward to supporting the board as you engage in this superintendent successor search. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Um, so I want to chat with you, board. I I know you've given us a few minutes to just present to you and then I think there's Q and A. And uh Chair Rainer, I think you're aware that I am going to have to duck out before the end of our time, so I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna start off and then I'm gonna hand the baton to Steve and then. Uh darken my screen, but I wanted to share uh just a couple of things that we think we do here at Human Capital Enterprises. That are a little bit different and you might not know our firm's name as well as some others, but we have been around for a decade and we typically do about four or five searches per year. That's actually a small number and we're uh, we're pretty um. Uh, we think long and hard about the communities that we think we can serve particularly well. Um, and Prosser comes to mind. Both Steve and I have done extensive work across Washington. We both worked on one of the. Uh, most recent Richland searches. Um, uh, we've served Spokane, we've served the other side of the state from Swim to Central Kitsap. To Port Townsend. Um, one of the things that you see with us that is quite different is that Steve is a. Experienced and seasoned superintendent and I bring the skill set from uh, from the human resources office. And when you think about. The complex work of a true superintendent search. There's two skill sets that I think really make the difference for a highly successful search. One is deep understanding of board and the role of superintendent. And so I couldn't be more pleased to have Steve Webb next to me as one of the, actually not only state, but nationally. Uh, recognized um great school superintendents. But there's another piece um that I think is also very critical, which is the art of recruiting and the art of leading recruiting processes. Which are complex and they're particularly complex in high stakes moments such as a superintendent search where. As you well know, board, everybody in the community is going to want to touch this process, get a sense of this process, lobby you about who to, right? It's very high stakes and very engaged and involved. And that skill set uh is what I grew up learning as a human resources leader. And so in our firm, we bring a superintendent and a human resources person together for almost all of our searches. To bring that combination of skill and the outcome of that, and don't take my word for it, by the way, folks, um, check with boards that we've worked with. But the outcome of that is twofold. I I mean, it's manifold and it's the ultimately, it's, it's a great leader for your community, but there's two specific things that you'll hear about us. One is that we run. One is that we run a process that is smooth, that is clear, that is transparent, that is highly professional. And we hear back from both candidates and board members who say to us, wow, this so far exceeded our expectation. We've never experienced a superintendent search process that had this high level of quality and professionalism. Secondly, and maybe more important than that, is we bring a slate of candidates that will supersede your expectations as well. Because we're schooled in the world of recruiting. And so time and time again, we hear from school districts who say, wow, caliber of the pool of candidates that you brought to us was very different than we had last time or the time before, or very different from the district across the street or down the road that had a very different experience. Because recruiting is a big part of it, and it's it's more than just putting it on a website. It's really getting to understand your community, reaching out to our contracts, our contacts statewide, regionally, and if you desire nationally, to bring in folks who based on our learning of your community will be really, really great matches for you. So that's a little bit about who we are and maybe some of the differentiators. I'm going to turn the baton and the mic back over to my colleague Steve. I'm going to say a quick abrupt good night. But thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to chat with you tonight. And I'm wishing you the very best of luck in your decision tonight and in your leadership transition.
Thanks, Hank. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Hank.
Thank you.
So given a preliminary conversation that we had with President Reiner, we've submitted two proposals in the documents that you've had a chance to review. The first focuses on an expedited interim superintendent search process with a proposed start date of July 1 of this year, although given the timing, this may need to be pushed back just a bit depending upon how long this board takes to process the decision about which firm, if you're choosing to work with a firm, how long that decision takes. As you know, time is of the essence. If you have an expectation with a July 1 start date, we're approaching commencement season and year end. And as I mentioned to President Reiner's in in the conversation we had previously, these truncated expedited search timelines will typically yield two types of candidates in a in a pool. The first candidate is a recently retired superintendent who is willing to give back, given the urgency to fill this critically important leadership role for the Proser community. The second type of candidate in an expedited search like this will be someone who aspires to the superintendency, may not have sat in the chair, may not even be in an assistant or senior executive cabinet position, but is certainly interested in exploring the possibility of serving as an interim for the Proser community and Proser School District and hoping that that might yield to some permanent opportunity with a permanent successor search. So the pool at this point likely will be fairly shallow, given the timing of this vacancy. The second alternate option included in the documents before you is an executive in residence proposal that would expedite the selection and placement of an acting CEO or interim superintendent and simultaneously launch a search for the permanent superintendent with that search concluding in December of 23, with the new superintendent assuming the duties as the permanent superintendent of July of next year. HCE would conduct the acting CEO search and the permanent search at no additional cost year over year to the district. And I'll highlight a bit more of that in my concluding remarks. But I want to clarify the contractual relationship here. The acting CEO and interim superintendent would be an employee of Human Capital Enterprises. The school district would contract with HCE to place an acting CEO who would report, take direction from the school board. We would include that into our professional services agreement so that there was clarity in terms of reporting relationships. This is not unlike the kind of professional services contracts that you already have in place. Every district scrambles to fill SLP positions, OTPTs, a psychologist and school districts contract with third party providers to fill those hard to fill positions that are critically important to children and services in your school district. So in many respects, this particular model replicates what you already have in practice through the placement of an acting CEO interim superintendent. Now, there are several benefits to this approach, and I want to just highlight those value propositions. First and foremost, we're pretty confident we can place an experienced recently retired superintendent from the region in the acting CEO role within four weeks. Secondly, there are significant cost savings here. The estimated cost savings to Proser School District for this next year would be 45,000 of total costs that you have already built into the budget for total superintendent expenses. That includes salary, any supplemental wages, all of the benefits, including, you know, social security, retirement, et cetera. It would be 14,000 what we would propose for the interim search, a permanent search for a district of this size is about 25,000. And there certainly are 6,000 in estimated inflationary cost expenses to the total cost of employing a superintendent of schools in Proser School District. That would include any cost of living adjustments, any inflationary costs related to retirement benefits, et cetera. The third value proposition or benefit is it would significantly strengthen the pool of interim candidates. And the simple fact of the matter is there are many recently retired superintendents who would be willing to step forward and serve in this role as an acting CEO if they could remain in inactive status with the Department of Retirement Services. And then finally, because we would simultaneously place and launch for a permanent successor superintendent search, you would be well ahead of the curve in terms of getting out in front of all of the other districts who may be doing superintendent searches this next year. Typically, those that cycle begins in December or January and then runs through late spring. So our proposed timeline of activities with a permanent superintendent's search are identified on page 10. You'll see in that proposal that we believe that we can wrap that up, conclude the permanent search in December of this year and provide a long enough runway for leadership transitions with the acting CEO and with the board. And then that person who has been selected as the permanent superintendent would then have an opportunity to build relationships, do needs assessment, and really understand the organization and community fully before stepping into the role in July of 2024. So in summary, we'll place a seasoned, experienced, highly qualified superintendent as acting CEO interim superintendent while simultaneously launching and conducting a national search for a successor superintendent at no additional cost to the district than what you are spending this year on total costs for your superintendent, both in terms of salary, wages and benefits. So with that, I will certainly respond to questions that you may have, and I'll turn it back over to you, President Reiner.
Thank you, Steve. It's a lot to digest. Anybody have a comment? Start. Lisa.
Okay. Steve, can you talk about the process for finding the permanent superintendent?
Yeah, because again, this would be an expedited process. We would, once we enter into an agreement, we would begin actively recruiting, activating our networks and identify somewhere between three and five potential acting CEO interim superintendents. We would have a slate meeting with the board. We would present that slate to you. If it's five, you might choose two to three to interview, and then we would schedule that interview with the board, and then the board would select from the final interviews, the preferred acting CEO. And then we would execute the personal services agreement as I described. In order to come, in order to complete that in a three to four week timeframe, we have to move fairly quickly.
That would be the interim process. What about for the superintendent, the permanent physician? What what does that process look like?
Yeah, if you review the timeline of activities on page 10 of the proposal, you'll see that the first activity would be a proposed board planning meeting in June. We've put placeholders by month because obviously we would sit down with the board and then identify the dates for each one of the proposed activities. We then engage in a significant listening and learning sessions. We first schedule one on one board conversations and then a schedule oftentimes 15 to 20 stakeholder focus groups. And then we pose three questions. Now, what's great about Proser? What are the challenges that the successor will need to face? And what are the skills, experiences and attributes that the superintendent successor, your next superintendent should possess in order to successfully sustain the great good work that's underway and to tackle the challenges in the near term? That helps inform what we call the ideal profile. Those are the leadership qualities, the characteristics, the experiences that help shape the way in which we activate networks and then engage in all of our recruiting efforts to develop a deep pool of potential candidates and or prospects to consider. We also simultaneously in August, those board conversations, the focus group meetings, all are scheduled tentatively for August. July would be a quiet month. And then we launch a community wide stakeholder survey that in essence asks the same three sets of questions. Our firm then does open thematic coding as a way of trying to make sense out of all of that information as a way of helping inform the ideal profile. And the firm needs to have some sense of what what's going well, because candidates certainly are going to ask us about the district and community, and they'll also ask us about what challenges are in the foreseeable future. So it helps inform candidates. It also helps inform the search firm as we engage in recruiting. In September, we have a presentation of a draft ideal profile. It comes to you as a draft. We do the work, given all of the input and feedback we've received from stakeholders in the community and internal employees of Proser School District. And then, of course, this is your superintendent criteria. So the board has some latitude to, you know, modify that language or direct some specific skill set that may have been missing in the document that we present. The proposed timeline of activities would have the recruitment window in September and October. We typically use two months. And then that's when we begin activating all of our regional and national networks to develop a really a deep pool of qualified applicants. In November, we have a presentation of the slate. We do our preliminary interviews. Typically, if we have 30 applicants, Hank and I will do reference, will spend some time reviewing the paperwork. And then we pull into a sort of top tier candidates that we will interview in in a preliminary round. We bring to you that preliminary slate. And then you tell us, and typically it comes to you in tiers, we have a tier A and a tier B, sometimes a tier C. And then you tell us you'll have access to all of the information, both in terms of the preliminary interview notes, all the reference documents, the application materials, you have unfettered access to all of those documents. And then from there, we typically take direction from the board on the first round interview applicants. And usually we recommend to boards somewhere in the number of five to seven. Sometimes boards will want to interview eight. Sometimes they choose to interview four. But usually that five to seven range fits with timing and schedules, not just the candidate's schedules, but also your schedules. Those interviews are conducted remotely via Zoom. And what we've learned from the pandemic is we can certainly manage that very easily and successfully. And we scaffold all of the supports well in advance so that a board is well equipped to show up and engage in really thoughtful interviews, conversations with those first round interviews. We deliberate and then the board will typically select somewhere between two and three finalists. That finalist round is scheduled for December. And depending upon the degree of deliberation that the board needs after the finalist rounds are scheduled, then sometimes it takes a little bit longer. Some boards want to do a comprehensive background checks with contract with party to do that work. That's an optional expense. We always recommend that boards do that. It's everything from social media to financial background check, criminal background check. All of that information then is provided to you so that you have access to those background checks as well. Some communities, some boards like to engage stakeholder panels as an optional extension of a community feedback. We usually schedule those during the finalist rounds and we that's at an additional cost of about $2,100. But we can certainly work through that with the board, depending upon whether or not you have an interest in doing that. We advise boards to engage in what we call a closed search process. And the reason that we recommend this to boards is that we know that if we engage deeply with the board, we engage with 15 plus stakeholder groups. There's a community survey. There's an impaneled group of stakeholders that are involved in their interviews, that the board gets lots of really valuable input and feedback. We know that there are some communities, some boards that wish to do public meetings, finalists, announcements of those meet and greets. We advise that you wait until the end of the process to schedule those meet and greets. And here's the simple. And here's the simple fact. It narrows the list of potential sitting superintendents who might be attracted to the Prosser School District and Prosser Community. If I have a relationship with a board and a community and my name will be publicly known and vetted in advance of being the preferred lone finalist, I might say, and we often hear from applicants, one of the first questions we get, is this an open public search process? Or will it remain confidential until the lone finalist is selected? And if it is an open process, if it's a sitting superintendent, many will simply say, Steve, Hank, I'm not interested in taking that risk. We are open, of course. This is your process. And Hank will say, you know, if the board has a strong preference to do it differently, we're certainly willing to do so. But at that planning meeting in June with a full search process, we would engage in that conversation and try to unpack the rationale why we recommend a closed search process.
Any other question?
Would we always be working with you and Hank, Steve? Or would there be other people from your group that we would work with?
I will be the lead. Hank will be a support. Occasionally, depending upon the number of focus groups and or the number of stakeholder panels that boards wish to impannal as part of the interview process. Sometimes we have to bring in one or two other associates. It's simply too much work at one time for two people to facilitate a process. But predominantly, I will be the front facing a lead and Hank will be a support.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. You keep mentioning June. And you're not talking about this June. You're taking, talking about a year from June. And if so, that would put it down to a deadline of starting a new superintendent July 1st. Am I, did I hear wrong?
I don't know if you heard wrong or if I misspoke. I am referencing June of 23. The question was in reference to the, my, my response was in reference to the question of the full superintendent's successor's search process. When we would start our planning meeting to conduct that search, the permanent superintendent search, our planning meeting with the board, we pose a June meeting so that we can wrestle out all of these activities and timelines, finalize that before the July summer recess. And then we would then be well positioned in August to launch with all of the community stakeholder engagement activities, the one-on-one conversations with the board.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, you said you, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, our interest again is to launch, is to place and launch as quickly as possible. Place the interim acting CEO and then launch the permanent search as quickly as possible. That way, we're well positioned. You will be well positioned to be in front of every other district in the state, in the state in finalizing your search process for 2024.
Steve, you said that Human Capital Enterprises does about four to five of these searches per year. Is this a smaller component of the overall business replacement? Or what percentage of your business is superintendent placement?
I don't have the total percentage of what revenue the firm generates.
Just, just roughly the placements, not money, just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know the answer to that. I work on superintendent searches occasionally. I'll be in a support role for an assistant superintendent position. I know that the firm does other senior cabinet level positions occasionally. They'll be asked to provide support to school districts with principal searches, but I'm not engaged in that line of work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other question?
I do, I have another one. So we have three board members up for election in November with two not returning, not filing. Then that's kind of at a crucial time in your proposed search. So you would have potentially two new faces kind of towards the end of the process. How would that change? Anything for your group?
Well, I think that's a conversation we would want to have with the board in June. If it's the interest of the current board to reach close closure before November, then we could modify the proposed timeline and still execute in order to meet a November 15th deadline for example. If it's the board's interest to delay the first round interviews, for example, so that new board directors could be onboarded in advance of, in advance of that specific activity. We can certainly modify that timeline of activities. But it's a conversation that I think I would strongly recommend, whether it's our firm or another firm, you know, that, that, that 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 conversation, those kinds of decisions happen together.
Thank you.
And of course, as I've said, it's your search. And we're going to take a direction from you relative to the outcomes that you want to achieve. We believe our proposal achieves an expedited placement of an experienced school executive gives you enough time to be very thoughtful and planful for a permanent superintendent search and positions you well in advance of everyone else in the state, likely who will be doing a search or most others who will be doing a search. I know Ellen's Burt's got an interim that they're running next year. I don't have any idea whether or not they're going to do a fall search process or if they're going to delay until the new year. But of course, we can certainly modify the timeline in order to achieve the outcomes you wish to achieve.
I have a question concerning this, Jason. Concerning the, the, finding the interim, that process. I think I heard you correctly, but you would be able to pull three to five interim candidates that we would be able then to interview? Is that correct?
Correct.
And then at that time, if we do find one that matches, we get three months down the road and it's just not working out. What's the process then?
As I've indicated in the proposal, we would have a 60-day advanced notice termination clause in the professional services agreement. That gives us enough time to meet our obligations to the employee. And, you know, certainly it would provide enough time for us to engage in a process by which we bring you another one or two. I'm pretty confident that we will find three to five exceptionally well-qualified, seasoned, experienced superintendents who've recently retired, would be willing to take on this temporary assignment for one year. But I recognize from your, from your chairs that there is some risk. And nevertheless, there will be risk. If you conduct a full interim search and not having that person work out, you'll be in the same place, whether it's the executive and residence model or whether it's an employee of the district, you'll still be in that same place.
Thank you. Any other question?
No, I think I'm good.
Well, I think we, I think you pretty much answered all of our questions at this point. Is there any other last comments you'd like to make, Steve?
Well, we would be honored to partner with you in getting a veteran executive in the chair as quickly as possible. And we'd be honored to partner with you to conduct a national successor search. And I think put you in a position where you're not just filling for the short term, but you will fill with a horizon of stability and longevity in the superintendency. And I will just say, from my own personal professional experience, having leadership stability in the superintendent chair makes a difference in an organization, makes a difference in community and makes a difference with student learning outcomes. So I want to wish you the very best. Again, Hank and I would be honored to work with you. And we look forward to learning more.
Thank you, Peggy. I don't know if you can hear me. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, I think we'll conclude that interview and we'll get back to you, Steve. I appreciate you taking the time all the way from South Carolina.
All right, take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Thanks.
When I was at a conference in Spokane and my daughter went to school at Eastern, getting her special ed degree. And she came and she was going to just spend the night with me in my hotel. We went to dinner and so I could see her. And we're in the hotel and she's carrying, she has her specialized, one of her books, like students with disabilities. And this guy goes, are you a special ed teacher? She goes, oh, not yet. I'm going to school. He's like, I'm superintendent Vancouver. I'll give you a job. He's like trying to hire her.
I'll give you a job.
I said, I should have said, you don't even know, she could be a crazy person. I said, I said, she goes, I'm not done yet. And I, she goes, I want to, I want to be close to home, not too far away. But it was, he was, he was not shy.
That's funny. Yes.
I don't know if you're gonna move to like make it I know we were gonna do like the request for proposals. How does, how does, how do the presentations from tonight impact that process as well? Like, do we still, are we still going forward with the request for proposals? Yeah, so I just didn't like, are we trying to move forward with the decision based on one of these two? Or are we still wanting to do that?
We have a, hi, this is Peggy. We still have Hank on the line. And who's our next, is, who's our next interview with?
No one. The other firm pulled out. They've contracted with another district that's in a similar situation we are.
Okay.
And they couldn't facilitate two in that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, what was, what was the threshold again? That we'd have to do the bid process from 45?
And so 75,000 is when it's like steel bid.
Okay.
Forty, I have to double check. I like to reference the policy in front of me before I actually am quoted on it. But usually between 40 and 75, you have to have at least two quotes. So it's not a steel bid process, but it's just like through multiple agencies. The difference, I haven't seen the numbers with these people, but the big difference is going to be like, we contract them. If we're paying them for services, you know, that, that's when I brought that up last night. Like, what's the cost of it? And if we're paying 200,000 for them or 250,000 to them, that could impact that we could probably do sole source at that point because of the, when we're paying for an employee, essentially, that's more sole source. But the overall search process, that's when we want to look at them equitably. You know, this bid versus that bid. So I don't think, I, I mean, 14,000, 20,000?
I think it's 14 and 18.
So we can move forward just with what we have. We don't have to go out for still the dirty. I just would like to know if you would like us to, I'm not sure. Please, did you already get them out?
I think we probably want to discuss these first. And then we'll probably have some, a decision as we come out. So with that, we were going to, we're gonna recess the regular meeting. Going to executives, excuse me, executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101G. Action may follow. And G is to validate the qualifications of an applicant for public employee or to review the, review the performance of a public employee. However, subject to RCW 423144, discussion by governing body of salaries, wages and other conditions of employment to be generally applied within the agency shall occur in an open meeting, the public. And when a governing body elects to make a final action hiring, setting the salary of an individual employee or class of employees or discharging or displewing an employee, that action shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. And 20 minutes? Are you guys good with 20 minutes? We take a five minute break. Yeah, for 20 minutes, we'll take a five minute recess. So the executive session will start at 7:01.
Jason, do you want me just to call your phone?
Yes, we'll be, we can do that.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll wait five minutes.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, we'll reconvene the special board meeting. Um. I don't know how to proceed, but I guess so we um we had two people come in Northwest Leadership, Human Capital Enterprises. Um. At this point, we need to make a decision on proceeding uh with a permanent candidate search as well as finding a replacement. Um. I guess I'll ask you if there's any question. No more questions? Do we have a direction we want to go?
I would make a motion that we hire Human Capital Enterprises to conduct the interim and the permanent search.
There's been a motion to accept Human Capital Enterprises uh contract and proposal to fire to hire and look for an interim as well as a permanent candidate. Uh is there a second?
Second.
So it's been motion accepted and seconded to approve uh Human Capital Enterprises uh proposal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Um with that, I think part of this discussion, um do we want to continue with the RFP or just be done uh not proceed with that?
I think we don't need to go forward.
Okay. But I thought I just wanted to make sure. All right, um. Any other questions, comments, concerns? With that, um we'll have a regular board meeting uh May twenty four uh next Wednesday at six P M. Right here in the library workroom. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.